Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight. The first thing on our agenda is an executive session. So at this point, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, we will dismiss to executive session. We'll walk down the hall. We'll be back.
Thanks to all of you for being with us tonight.
So tier one items currently include the central fire station and the property acquisition for Southwest and Northwest stations. I've neglected to put that on here, but it is. It's central fire station and the property acquisition for the other two facilities. That total 8.7 million. In the parks department, we have various restrooms, couple of playgrounds, parking lot repaving, those types of things that are, that are considered tier one, so that's right at $2 million. We've got about $9 million worth of drainage items, and we're gonna discuss drainage in depth in a minute because it currently does not have a funding mechanism. So this is brand new to the general fund. Annual street maintenance, 1.25 million. That is our $250,000 every year that we budget in general fund C I P, and that is directly tied to the ordinance when we set up the street maintenance fee. We have to fund that 250 in the general fund as part of that street maintenance fee. So that is, that is not one item that's 1.2 million, that is five years of 250,000 each year. And then also downtown electrical service at Festival Park and Main Street for $350,000. So your tier two items in the general fund is going to be the $11.2 million in the citywide street rebuild that Bartlett, sorry, Mr. Bartlett. We have to use last names, we've got too many Steves and Stevens. So that is, in order to bring up the average of our city streets to a C+, is to do $11.2 million worth of, of street work, that is in a tier two, as well as a Southwest, Northwest, and rehab of station four fire facilities at 10.5 million. The animal shelter and sunset office at 9 million. The tennis courts, playgrounds, late Nakadoches, part, uh, walkway, I think there is some parking as well in there for 1.3. And then downtown sidewalks and garbage sites for 435,000. On tier three, we have the fire training facility. We have the, the improvements to City Hall, the, the service center and a warehouse at 13 million. The skate park at 400,000, and sidewalk improvements at 1 million. So if we want to look at each individual area, so let's take fire facilities. Of course, like I said, with, these are, these are the tiers. Currently, what we are proposing is that we proceed with the land acquisition for those facilities, if at all possible, and look at the, the central fire station as one of our, of our proposal for the tier one. And then tier two would be the Southwest, Northwest, and the number four station rehab remodel. On city facilities, we do not have any currently marked as a tier one. Tier two for the animal shelter and the sunset office. And then tier three for City Hall, the service center and the warehouse. And we have tiered those that way because I think at this point, we, we realize that we probably need to have a facility master plan done for us to look at some of those, those rehabs of, of City Hall and the service center, what our ideas are, if those are actually what we need. And so that will be one thing that we would, we would request, is the ability to proceed with a facility master plan before we get to the point where we're actually requesting that we spend the money for the service center and the warehouse and City Hall. On parks, again, this is various restrooms. I know y'all saw restrooms, tons of them, there's lots of them. A couple of playgrounds, parking lot rehab, I think at the baseball field maybe, that may be tier two, I can't remember. And then, of course, the skate park, which is something brand new, would be a tier three item. Downtown, again, electrical service, main and Festival Park is something that we, we anticipate needing to do immediately as with the sidewalks and the garbage sites being something within the next five years. Now, on drainage, I, this is something that is new to the general fund for us. In the past, those items have been budgeted and paid for out of the utility fund under the assumption that it was storm sewer. These actually, in, in reality, drainage is tied to streets, not to utilities. And so Mr. Bartlett and I have spent a lot of time trying to, to get things where they belong. And so this is our first effort to try to correct some of those, those items. Drainage does need to be a general fund item. We do have a couple of, of items. The first is the annual storm system repairs at $5 million. That's actually a million dollars annual that's set aside for, kinda like we do with water and sewer, for any projects that come up that year, any failures that year. And so there, those would be not specific projects, but anything that came up during that year that needed to be fixed, or could be some smaller projects. I know if, if you recall, we recently have done church and Ford Street and those types of sewer projects, I mean, drainage projects, shop projects. We also have $4 million for our critical storm system reconstruction that is included in this as well. And like I said, there's no, currently no funding mechanism for this. And so one thing that we are going to request tonight is some direction on the ability for us to do some research on ways for us to fund this. This is something that every city has. We, everybody struggles with, with that. We have a significant amount of, of, as Mr. Bartlett told you, systems in place that are old. And these, you don't really know that you have a problem until you have a problem. And so we do need to, to begin a process of looking at how to fund these ongoing. This 9 million is something for right now, but we need a funding mechanism in place ongoing. And so just like you would have funding for streets and funding for wat, you, we need the same thing for drainage because at this point, there is nothing in place currently. And so that is going to be one of our asks tonight, is for, is for direction on the ability to proceed with, with bringing back to you some funding mechanisms for drainage. Another deep breath. So streets is a little bit, a little bit convoluted because streets is part of general fund and part of the new street maintenance fund, which is, was created when we created the street maintenance fee that is on the water bill. So those are in two separate funds, but they are literally tied together. Every street project we do overlaps. And so we may do one big project, and part of it is paid for with general fund money, and part is paid with street maintenance money. And so at the end of the day, it's all streets, the funding mechanisms are different. So we struggled with how to present this where it makes sense. And so if it doesn't, please stop me because I, I can confuse myself. So I confused Mario earlier, so I, I fully expect to confuse you. But here's the first attempt, tier one. This is the annual street maintenance fee in the general fund, the $250,000 a year that is set by ordinance when we created the street maintenance fee. This is something that has been funded in the past and needs to continue to be funded in order for us to, to stay within compliance with the ordinance that we passed. Now, tier two is the $11.2 million for the citywide rebuild. The reason that this is tied to the street maintenance fund, yes, it's a general fund item, but what we decide to do with that 11.2 determines what we do with the street maintenance fund, and that's gonna make sense in a little bit. Tier three is gonna be sidewalks of about a million dollars. So the street maintenance fund, we already talked about that. This is, well, no, sorry, back up. Street maintenance fund, here is option one. So let's assume for the time being that the $11.2 million citywide street rebuild, y'all decide to proceed with. However, we decide to fund it, whether it's debt-funded, however, we, we decide to proceed with that. This option is the effect that spending that $11 million in the general fund has on that street maintenance fee. As you recall, we have to have 250 in general every year, and then we generate 750,000 a year in the street maintenance fund. So if we spend $11 million to get all these streets up to C+ or better, then in the street maintenance fund, that 750,000 every year that we have, we're gonna spend in year one until we get the 11 million spent. Then in year two and year three, we'll be banking that money. We're gonna be continually bringing the money in off of the thing. We're just not gonna be spending any money because we're spending those two years to spend the $11 million in the general fund, okay? Then, in year four and five, we estimate to spend a million of dollars in those years. Now, that does not mean we're going to generate a million dollars' worth of revenue. We're still gonna be bringing in that 750 for the water bill. It's just those two years that we didn't spend any money, then we'll have that money banked and spent, okay? Now, that's under the assumption that we, we get everything up to C+ by spending that 11 million dollars. Now, that 11 million dollars is gonna take a year or two to spend because there's no way to do, or through, I don't know how long, it'll take a while because it's going to affect lots of streets in town. Now, the second option is if we choose not to proceed with the $11.2 million street rebuild. Basically, what that means is the general fund continues the 250,000 every year that we have to by ordinance. And the street maintenance fund, then, instead of the 750 that we generate right now, needs to be at least a million dollars because we're gonna have more streets that need work every year if we do not spend the $11 million to get a whole bunch of them up to snuff right now. And so this 5 million is basically a million every year. Now, what that means is we currently are generating approximately $745,000 after, after we have our bad debt expenditures that's available, which means we are going to need a rate increase on the street maintenance fee in order to fund a million dollars in ongoing maintenance. So those are the two options for streets. And so when I, you know, when I tell you they're, they're really intertwined, they really are. So the, the first, the first goal here is for us to, to decide at some point in the near future, not tonight, but at some point, that whether we're gonna go with the citywide street rebuild or not. Because that affects more than, you know, affects general fund, but it also affects what we do with the street maintenance fund and what we do with that fee. Yep.
Do you have any idea what that rate increase would be?
So the current rate structure was set in January of 2018. It currently is $2.50 per month for multifamily residential. It's $5 per month for a single-family residential. It's $7.50 per month for commercial, and $15 per month for industrial. And part of what, what our ask would be is we are going to need to proceed with some sort of study on how these user fees need to be adjusted. We're not saying that all of them need to be increased, we're not saying, we don't know, it's not a percentage. We need to do some research. You know, at first glance, you would think that, you know, if you've got business A and business B, and one has, you know, 18-wheelers in and out all day long, and one doesn't, and they both say, are paying the same fee every month for a street maintenance, and that's basically for the use and wear and tear on the streets, there may be another way. Lots of cities have flat fees, lots of cities have based on square footage of your facility. The, I mean, it can get extensive as to, you know, the wear and tear on the roads and that type of thing. This is something that we wanna do some further research on because we may be bringing back to you the need to change this structure. Does not mean that any or all of the, the user classifications may change significantly, but there may be some, some changes that do need to happen to the way that we have this structure. This, like I said, was done, implemented in January of 2018, and we have not revisited it since then. And so that is definitely something that, that we would like to do because I don't think at, at any point, we're gonna say we just wanna do a across-the-board 10% or across the board. I think it needs some further review as to how the structure actually should be built based on impact to the actual streets that, that there, the fee is to cover, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it, it knows fees as far as wear and tear, and especially large trucks. Isn't that controlled by the state? I mean, individual cities don't make that call, does it?
On, on what?
On the use, the heavy use of.
On the fees?
On the fees.
I don't know, when we set the rate structure, we just looked at what some other cities had done. Now, there are some other cities that did it more detailed, and I don't know unless, that's part of what we need to do some research on, is to see what we have available. Because we just kinda did, you know, threw some darts and said, we need $750,000. How do we make this work within our rate structure that we currently have? And so I think, I think there are other cities that have done this based on, on other things than just the type of account you are. And that's what we're wanting to do some research on and, and bring back to you a, a rate study plan for the street maintenance fee, similar to what we've done with water, water using utilities in the past, if that makes sense.
But our fee wasn't completely detailed, all right?
No, ours is very much just based on the type of business you are, not your impact to the streets. Yeah. Any other questions on that? Okay.
Yes.
Pam, will you please explain to council, because just by looking at the two options, one is cheaper than the other?
Yes, okay. And I, I may, I may need Steve to jump in. Okay, so at first glance, you think we're gonna spend $11.2 million in the general fund, and then in street maintenance fund, we're only gonna spend 2.7, okay? Or we don't spend the 11, and we spend five. Okay, the 11.2 gets all of our streets to maintenance almost immediately. I mean, understand, contract time, it takes a couple of years. If we continue with what we're doing now, the 750,000 a year annually, we basically are just fixing what is broken a little bit every year. We still are going to have streets that fall way below that C+ level ongoing. And so that 11.2 gets us to a point where we can maintain. Now, at some point, if we decide that we don't go with the 11.2, and we don't spend that and get everybody up to C+, is a million dollars a year enough? And Mr. Bartlett's going to say, no, it's not because we're going to have more and more streets that are gonna fall down below the C+ level. And if I'm not mistaken, about 2 million a year is what he really needs. If we don't spend the 11.2, he needs 2 million really every year ongoing. When we're generating 750,000 a year, 2 million seems, oh. So at that point is why this was an option for us to get everything done in one fell swoop, and then we can maintain. Because at this point, a fee to maintain at $2 million a year is a pretty significant fee increase.
This sounds like tier one to me.
And that is something we're going to discuss. So the reason it's not tier one is because it's really not feasible to be done within the first year or two of this project. But at the end of the day, I would agree with you. I think it is probably tier one, but under the, the definitions that we just, we, we've given you, we understand it's not gonna happen in year one and two. And so that's why we chose to, to tier it as a two. All of this is, is our first best guess. And any of these items, you're, are more than welcome to, to give us direction on how. I don't think that's a two, and this is my, or this is a one, and we are welcome to work through that process with you. But yes, I mean, at, at any point, any of these items can be, can be moved. And if you do feel that, as a council, that this is something that y'all want to move to tier one, then it's definitely something that, that we can, we can do because it is something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
It just seems like, I mean, the reason that I say that is because it seems like option one and option two is being, is being presented as it's either option one or option two.
Yeah, we gotta do something, right, 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 right.
Which means to me that we need to make a call on this, one way or the other. Why, and I, and I understand classifying it as tier two because of not being able to get it rolling in year one and year two. What I don't understand is why that, why we can't get it rolling in year one and year two.
I can't answer that, but I'm sure Mr. Bartlett can.
So there's some period of time, just to make the street assessments and then work with some set of engineering plans and go to bed. Also realize, we think that 10, 11, 12 million dollars' worth of roadwork is a big pill to swallow. So we think this is probably gonna be split up in some contracts that would have a duration o, over, over a year. Realize also, from about this point in time to about early spring, we can't get asphalt. I mean, asphalt really isn't made during the cold weather season, and we can't lay it. So our, our window when to do this is certainly less than 12 months. The amount of contractors and availability that we have, I think it's gonna limit our resources. So for us, we think it's gonna take a year to get a run and start, and a couple of years, a year and a half to execute it. And so that's kinda why we did that.
So we'd be looking into 2023 to actually be able to start putting these streets?
I think that's reasonable. I mean, we can pave streets the day after tomorrow, we've obviously got a list of streets, and so we can. To do an $11 million worth is a, is a bigger type of project, yes.
Okay, so on the general fund side, and, and street maintenance, since they're kinda tied together, what direction that I am requesting tonight is for us to discuss the possibility of proceeding with property acquisition for the facilities, for the fire stations. That is something that we can do with existing cash reserves if we choose to do so. That's something that we can start that process. It doesn't mean we're gonna be buying land tomorrow, but there is a process to, to start that, those, actually just looking and negotiating that at some point in the future. So that's one thing that we, we would like some direction on. Also, on the property tax debt service payoff, I, I would like to get some idea what I, I would like to get some idea what your, your view on replacing like-for-like on our debt is. This is not something that we have faced in a, in a very long time because as we've paid off debt, we have issued new debt in the past. This is the first time that we are going to be paying off essentially all of our debt at one time. So in essence, the majority of our debt is falling off in September of twenty twenty-two. Are you open to proceeding with some of these items, up to twenty-three to twenty-four million dollars worth of these items, to be, to be issued with maybe a CO in order for us to keep that debt level on the pay, the property tax rate level, if that makes sense? Because if not, then you have, all of that pays off in September of twenty twenty-two. And then at some point in the future, when you do decide that we have some of these projects that you want a debt fund, then you're coming back and adding to the property tax rate that exists at that time. And it will be a pretty significant change in, in the, the actual property tax rate because that is all debt, debt rate. So that's, that's something that is not necessarily, I'm not asking you to say we're going to issue twenty-three million dollars' worth of bonds tonight. That, that's not what, I'm just wanting to know what your appetite is for like-for-like debt. Is that something that we want to continue as we go into the future? Always rolling that debt as we pay something off, replacing it? Because we do have the projects and we do have the existing funding structure there. So that's something that I, I would like some comment on. We also would like to, to research some options to bring back to you on how to fund drainage now that it is a general fund item and is a pretty significant ongoing. Of course, you know, year one, we're going to have, or year two, four to five million dollars. But it is an annual million-dollar request to fund ongoing maintenance and, and repair of, of our drainage system. And so there does need to be a funding mechanism in place for that. And then on the street side, we, we do need to assess whether we need to do the, the complete rebuild and, and, or not, and how that affects our street maintenance fee, as well as doing some structured changes, the research on those fee changes, if that is necessary, and how that fee structure is set up. And so, I have no idea what time it is.
Five till, five to five.
Oh, wow. Okay. Yay. Okay. So at this point, if we want to, general fund, we are more than welcome. I, I'm, I'm ready. We can roll with general fund, or we can stop now and discuss general fund and, and do utility fund in January, however you want to proceed. But at this point, if we can at least get through some, discuss some of these items, and then if y'all decide you want to, you know, continue with utility, I'm, I'm ready to roll. If not, we can, we can take a break.
Any comments?
I'm interested in the utility.
I just have one question on, on the like-for-like debt. So in other words, you're saying we'll never be out of debt, unless there's an economic growth?
Right. And, and that all, it all depends. We, technically, we will be out of debt in September of twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Except for the latter truck. The issue is, knowing that we have a hundred million dollars' worth of tier-one request, do we want to continue with the existing debt that we have, replacing that ongoing instead of waiting a year or two and then coming in and adding that debt back? So that, that's kind of the question.
But, but waiting a year or two, and there's projects that's not going to be done.
Right, right.
Okay.
Because there, there's those tier-one items that are the ones that need to be done within one or two years. And so we have plenty of items that we could fund pretty much immediately if, if needed, so.
So when we start growing, that won't be an issue, right?
Do what?
When we start growing, growth.
If we grow, exactly the way Mario explains it, is, you know, you're, if we have more people at the table, you know, your piece of the pie gets smaller. If you don't have more people at the table, you have a bigger piece of the pie. And so the, the, the impetus there is to grow. And so you're, you're not, you're not paying as much individually if you have more people sharing the cost. And so, yes, growth is, is, at the end of the day, is the goal.
Thank you. Anything?
I mean, are we discussing, my understanding is that you need today?
I would love to have some direction. I want to be able to bring something to you, yes.
So before we move on to utility fund, we need to discuss this. Okay.
Love that.
My thought on the street rebuild or maintenance is it seems like my preference for option one versus option two depends on the research results of the fee structure changes. Right? Because if the results of that come back and it's a flat rate, then I'm going to be more inclined to not do that and go with option one. And, and so I don't know how to be helpful to you in that way, since I can't, I, I feel like I, I don't have enough information yet to give a preference on option one or option two.
Makes sense.
If that makes sense. And I don't know how to get around that if to just to say, well, let's go ahead and research it before we give preference on option one or option two.
So what, what, what we can do in the interim, I mean, at the end of the day, what we need is a full-blown rate study. And we're going to talk about that when we get to the utility fund, and, and this would be something that we would include with that. But in the interim, after the holidays, that is definitely something that we can look at what rate structures are out there, what everybody else is doing, how they're funding theirs, what they're based on. And then we can give you some scenarios. If we were to go this route, this is the amount of money that we could generate at these, at these rates. It's going to be kind of a down and dirty calculation, but it would be give, something to give you an idea in January, maybe February, hopefully by January, to give you an idea of, of what you're looking at if we choose to try to stay with a rate that will fund the two million dollars a year. We can do that.
And it would be possible to do that without giving you a direction on option one or option two?
Yes, at, at this point, I, Mario, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not, we're not going to be starting street construction in January anyway. And so basically what we're asking y'all tonight is not to tell us exactly what projects y'all want to do. We are just needing some direction to proceed with the entire process. What is the next step in this huge process that is going to be our CIP? And so it's very much possible that, you know, on the utility side, when we get there, we are going to need a rate study. We have not had that in, since twenty sixteen. We can't tell you, these are the projects you need to do when, until we know how we can fund them. And so that is very much what we're requesting now is just the ability to do some of this background work to give you more information at the first of the year.
I mean, yeah, I don't see that. You've been wanting to say something. I've seen your face.
No, no, right. I just bring, I just want to clarify the reason. I, I definitely want to hear about the utility fund tonight.
Okay.
And instead of in January, because, I mean, this is something that I'd like to consider over, you know.
Well, I'm ready whenever you are.
And also, one of the things that, that really is unspoken in this is that street maintenance fund that was tacked on is basically an additional tax. And it's a regressive tax because everybody pays the same thing. So that's part of the reason I'd like to hear the utility fund issues and then come back. Whether we do a study or we don't do a study, I mean, it's, it's a tax, is basically what we're saying. Because some people fund street maintenance out of the general fund, right? I mean, so, so it's just an additional tax we've got. So I'd like to see it in the whole picture. That's the only reason that I was saying. And I definitely want to hear utilities before we leave for the break. I hope we're going to have a break over the holidays.
Ms. Anderson?
Nothing for me.
So same goes for the drainage fee. That is definitely something that, that we would like to bring y'all some options after the first of the year. There are a variety of things that we can do with that. And not to the point tonight where I can present those because I would like to do some more research, but Mr. Bartlett and I both have, have batted that around for the last year or so, knowing that this was coming. And so that's definitely something that I would like to bring y'all some options on that as well, if, if y'all are willing to, to look at some funding options for, for the drainage as well. Now, I know we've, we've discussed a little bit on the, the like-for-like, on the, on the property tax debt service. That is something that is going to kind of drive what we bring to you in the first of the year of these projects. Because our next step is going to be looking at some of these specific projects and phasing them over this five-year period and giving you more detail on how we can do this, when we can do this, and how we fund it. And so that is definitely something that impacts greatly what we bring to you as the general fund projects. And so that's, that's definitely something I need some, some direction. Are we, are we looking to do like-for-like debt so that I can bring to you twenty-three to twenty-four million dollars' worth of projects that we are going to propose to issue within the next year that cover that, that debt service or, or not? And so I think that is something that, that's, that's probably one of the most important things outside of, of, like I said, we, we would like to discuss the property acquisition for the fire facilities as well. But those two are something I, I really need some direction on tonight, if possible.
A clarification. So is your, is the staff position that, I just want to make sure that, that I'm understanding this, that if we don't continue with the like-for-like debt in a couple of years, we're going to have to issue new debt anyways?
Well, at this point, yes. When you're looking at a hundred and seventy-five million, of course, that's not all general fund, but you're looking at a hundred million dollars' worth of projects. We have very small amounts of funding sources, you know, yes, we're going to go look for, for grants. We are going to spend everybody else's money before we're going to spend our own. But at the end of the day, when you're looking at ninety-eight million dollars' worth of, of projects, we have to be able to, to fund some of those with the existing debt that we are rolling off. And so that would be definitely something that we would, we would suggest. We'd take a hard look at taking twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars of these general fund tier-one projects or tier-two if we decide that the street maintenance item is a tier-one. That is something that we could fund with these, with these COs and, and, and roll with that same debt rate, yes.
And I know that we know this because we sat through our capital improvement presentations over the course of the last couple of weeks. But when you say tier-one, this is just for clarification for people who are listening and people who are here and who weren't here at those meetings or at those presentations. When you say tier-one, we're not talking about, and I know you said this at the very beginning, but we're not talking about like, paint something that doesn't need to be painted, for example. We're talking about like necessary, serious infrastructure improvements that have been neglected, that need to be taken care of.
Yes, could be a complete failure issue, could be a safety issue. There is a, there is a number of reasons that, that they are classified as tier-one. But yes, these are the items that we're telling you are in immediate need and we have got to address in the next year or two. Or we're going to have some issues, some severe issues in some cases.
So my initial sense, and, and also based on having talked to people in the community, is that for years, the majority of the projects, if not all of them, that were brought to our attention as tier-one are things that have needed to be addressed. And if we are at that level of urgency, which it sounds like we are, then it seems to me to be the responsible thing to continue with the like-for-like debt. That's my initial impression. But I only speak for myself, obviously.
Exactly.
Any other thoughts, Ms. Anderson?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Well, I, I believe we should continue the like-for-like debt, and we'll pay it off early when we have an economic boom.
I mean, I, I don't see a reason that we wouldn't want to see a proposal.
Yes, and that was going to be my next, if, if y'all are willing.
Use that.
Right. If y'all are willing, then what we would, what we would like to do, and, and y'all definitely tell us if this is not what you want us to do, but we would like to go through those tier-one items. If streets is tier-one in your mind, and we can have that discussion, we can bring to you a list of proposed items that we could fund with that twenty-three to twenty-four million dollars of, of that same debt rate for, for discussion in January, if, if that's something, I guess, in January would be good, to give y'all an idea of some of those, those items that, that could be funded pretty quickly with that. Like I said, we'll, we'll give you a list and y'all can, y'all can pick and choose. And as you go through your tier ones, or if there's tier twos that you feel like are tier ones and y'all want those to be addressed sooner rather than later, then I think that would be the next step is for us to decide which of these projects we want to pursue with that, with that debt rate.
And, and would you do that with the ARPA funds as well?
Um, and it, yes, when we get, and we're going to talk about that when we get to the utility fund. But yes, that is definitely something that later tonight, when we actually vote on the, the contractor for those administrations, we actually are going to sit down with them and go through the listing of all of our projects, get their direction on, you know, yes, this, this would be good. You can do this under the, under the regulations and guidelines, and present to y'all a list of, of those projects. We will talk about that a little bit more when we get to utility fund, though.
Okay. So can we, are you good to move on? Do you have what you need?
Do we have everything we need?
Are, are we okay with?
Sorry, the property acquisition for the fire facilities. That is something that we would like to proceed with if, if at all possible. Get your, your direction on whether y'all are to the point where you want to start looking at some, some, some possible property acquisition to bring to you. I mean, of course, we're not going to go out and buy the property, but us go look and bring those, those items to you at a future, at a future meeting?
Mayor, if, if I may, just kind of give some clarity on that. The intent would be is be able to meet with council and discuss specific locations. Because right now, we've been speaking in generalities, but looking at specific locations. Start giving, getting an idea of the cost of those, cost of those parcels. And just to determine whether or not you want us to proceed any further with negotiating on, on, on the purchase. That's really it.
I would definitely like to see some, some proposed locations and some actual specific ones. And at least look at those options.
So I'm not totally convinced yet on, on all of the fire stations, relocations. And so I'd like to, I mean, if, if you're just going to go look around at properties, that's, that's fine. But I have, still have other questions about, you know.
Yeah, I think at this point, we just need to be able to go find what's out there to, to bring to you. Yeah.
Just understand it better.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Are we ready for utility fund?
Okay, all right, yes.
Committing ourselves to something.
Yeah, no, no, no. We're, we're not writing any checks, I promise.
There's absolutely no commitment. It's just to come, really to literally come to you with specifics. I mean, at this point, it's just specific locations and, and how that could be addressed. That's it. But no, no commitments.
All right, utility fund. So the total cost all in for all water and wastewater items is a little, almost eighty-four million dollars. Of that, thirty-five point six is water and forty-eight million of wastewater. Of that, the majority of these items are tier-one. Sixty-nine, almost seventy million dollars of these are tier-one. And as Mr. Bartlett presented in all of, all of his meetings, this is, this is strictly due to, to years of deferred maintenance. We've got some, some very old infrastructure in place that needs to be, needs to be worked on. And so, yes, we are, we are in an issue with the utility fund where the majority of, of our items are in immediate need. And so I, I did, like I said, in your new summary, they are sorted by, by tier. And I did not list them like I did with general fund because it is the majority of, of those items. And so I was just going to direct you to that summary to look at those individual tiered items. Here, as far as our funding sources, cash reserves, at the end of this fiscal year, we estimate to have approximately fourteen point six million dollars in cash reserves available for some of these projects. At this point in time, we have about twenty-seven million, but we have projects that are ongoing. We had about nine million dollars' worth of projects that we carried over from last year and about seven million dollars' worth of projects that were budgeted this year. And so this fourteen million is after we have encumbered all those funds. And so that does, this does not include the sixteen million dollars' worth of projects that we have ongoing. This is fourteen million dollars for these new seventy, yes. Oh, okay.
Just eventually I do.
Okay.
So didn't we have like a million left of COVID dollars or something?
That's in the general fund, and that is part of that three and a half million dollars, and I neglected to mention that earlier. That three and a half million dollars in cash reserves for general fund does include that CARES money. Because it was, it was literally just a reimbursement for fire and police salaries. And so it's just in the regular reserves for general fund. But yes, you're correct.
Let's hope we had an extra million.
So utility fund, I estimate at the end of this year, we should have, like I said, about fourteen and a half million dollars available to fund a portion of these projects if we choose to do some of this with cash reserves. Of course, the majority of, of these are all supported by user fees. This is water and. This is water and sewer. These are, this is a proprietary fund and so it is run like a business. And so the, the ability to pay our operations and our debt here is all tied to what the, the user fees are. Before we are to the point where we're able to start processing of this 70 million dollars, what can we afford to do now? We need to have a rate study done. And that is going to be one of my asks tonight, is we have not had a rate study completed on water and sewer since 2016. I'm not sure if, if any of you remember, but at that point, we, we needed a complete restructure of our water and sewer rates. And so that was all done. We needed a pretty significant increase because we were, we were at about a 2 million, two and a half million dollar deficit every year. And so the rate structure was, was implemented over a five-year span because it was a relatively large rate increase. We could not have done it all in one year. And so by the end of the, the five years, we're already a little bit behind because of, of the phasing of the process. But honestly, a water utility rate study needs to be done at least every three to five years, so it's time for it anyway. But with the, with the advent of 70 million dollars' worth of projects in, in front of us, it's pretty imperative that we know where we stand and what our, our rate structure can withstand so that we can tell you exactly what we can fund with, with the existing rates. And so that's something that, that we definitely need to, to look at doing a rate study sooner rather than later so that we can, can bring you some, some proposals of which of these items we can, we can proceed with and when. If that makes sense. Of course, debt here is all revenue-based and so these would be revenue bonds more than likely because they are, they are supported by the actual user fees. That is, that is always an option when you're funding 7 mil-, 70 million dollars. Debt's pretty much what, what we are, are going to have to look at because you're never going to have 70 million dollars' worth of cash, unfortunately. Grants, there again, not sure what's out there. Another of our ask at the end of tonight is going to be how to proceed with some, some grant administration services and federal stimulus money. Here again is where we have currently in the bank 4 million dollars with another 4 million coming next August. This is something that we definitely want to have a plan in place to get that money spent. Like Mario says, we want to spend somebody else's money before we spend our own. And so it's pretty imperative that we get a listing of, of projects to you so that we can proceed with at least that, that first tranche of 4 million dollars. Mr. Bartlett assures me that he has at least 4 million dollars' worth of projects shovel-ready that we can hit the ground with once we do decide that these are, are ARPA-ready projects. And so once we have had a opportunity to meet with our grant administration company, I would, I would foresee us being, first of the year, bringing you some specific items to look at to fund with those ARPA funds. And then second tranche in August, we can be ready and have those ready to roll by then as well if, if that's what y'all, if you, if you want to wish to spend the entire 8 million on water and sewer infrastructure. So, well, I beat myself to that slide, so we'll just keep going. So here we go. The last rate study was performed. It, we finished it in 2016. It's a pretty extensive process. I believe we actually contracted with them in 2015. The last rate study that we did, there's a couple of ways and, and that each of these, these companies presented this. We chose to go with a cash basis so that they actually looked at our existing budget structure and, and built the rates on that. What we do here that a lot of cities don't is we actually fund, fully fund our depreciation every year. In a proprietary business, in government, government accounting is so backwards, but depreciation is not a budgeted expense in the utility fund. And so what we have done for a number of years is whatever that prior year's depreciation expense is, we set aside that cash in the next year to fund future replacement of that stuff. And so every year, operations is putting between 3 and a half to 4 million dollars out of operations into our capital reserve account to cash fund all of these CP, CIP projects. So that 16 million dollars of projects we have ongoing, this is where the money came from, our transfer every year. And so that was not included when they set the rate structure that we currently have. Now, at the end of the day, it would be, you know, in a perfect world, you would look at every single expenditure, you would look at weather analysis, all this stuff. And so some of that was done. I'm not sure that in 2016, we, we really foresaw some of the things that actually happened to us. And so I think at, at this point in the, in the future, a utility rate study would be done a little bit differently. We're going to probably give them a little more direction on the ability for them to look at our local weather because, as you know, we've had some very, very wet years. We haven't sold as much water as I think we had anticipated when the rate study was done. Our consumption has went down. This was on the heels of, of some very big conservation efforts that the city made. We had lots of big water users take us to heart and they actually did some conservation and so they don't use as much water as they did prior. And so lots of things that, that the rate study was built on over the last five and six years has not happened the way we thought it was going to happen. And so we are a little bit behind the curve on, on where we need to be with our current rate structure. And so it's definitely, like I said, it's, it's kind of three to five years is, is the average. It's definitely time, but because of the situation with the precipitation and the conservation and, and the, the depreciation, it's definitely time for us to take a look at our, our water and sewer rates again. So on the utility fund, first of all, that is the, a big project. Utility rate study takes some time. And in order for us to really be able to bring to you what we can fund, we would like to get started as, as soon as possible on, on our rate study. That will have to be done through an RFP process or RFQ. And, and so it's going to take some time, but we would like to proceed with that so that we can get some analysis done. It will take several, several months. So we would love to be able to start that after the first of the year. I do not remember how much we paid in 2015 for our last rate study. I, I don't even know that I have that in the system, but I can dig around. But that, that's definitely something after the first of the year that, that I would like to be able to, to at least go out for RFPs and see what's out there and see what our options are and, and bring that back to you so that we can get that done and kind of have a better understanding of where we are. Because 70 million dollars is a lot to fund in the utility fund. And so we kind of need to know where our rate structure is and what we can support of that. And of course, oh, wait.
You'd bring that back into the agenda item in January?
Actually, what we, what I would like to do is, is get the approval to actually do an RFP, get it on the streets, and then that way we can bring to you a actual proposal to do the rate study. We would have somebody, here's this company, here's how much they're going to charge us and here's the timeline. If we're, if we're, you know, best case scenario, I would like the approval to, to do a, a full-fledged rate study and bring to you that, that RFP results and hire somebody.
That we would approve before it's moved forward.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anybody have a problem with that or?
I, I just have a question.
Sure.
Can you tell me what's involved in a rate study? I'm so sorry not to.
No, 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 no. So, a lot. Now, at the, at the, at the, just the bare bones, they're going to come in and they're going to take a history. So they're going to look at five years, 10 years, I'm not sure, of, of our revenues, water and sewer. They're going to look at all of our operational expenditures, they're going to look at our capital expenditures. Then they have to take that history and then forecast out what, what our, you know, our, our future is going to be. So we're, they'll look probably at a five-year, maybe even a 10-year. They're also going to, like I said, we're going to need them to look at some, some weather history. So they, not that you can predict the weather around here, God knows we can't predict the weather, but try to build a rate structure somewhere where, where, whether we have a really dry year or a really wet year, we're somewhere in the middle. And so they do, the last rate study is about this big. They literally look at everything. They pull in all of our billing from the utility billing department. They'll take the detail of that by category, by single-family residential, they'll look at commercial, they'll look industrial, at their usage patterns. It's very, very in-depth, but at the end of the day, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to look at because our, our rate structure is very, is very broad.
But it provides a lot of information.
Lot of information.
I'm ready for it.
Ms. Boulden?
Yes, I'm okay.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'd like to see that also.
Perfect, perfect. So we will get started on that and then on the ARPA funds. So, you know, we, the treasury has given us a category, four categories of what we can spend money within. And, and we know that, that water and sewer infrastructure is one of those categories. Understanding the, the, the volume of expenditures in the, the utility fund, that's something, we could literally use all 8.1 million in utility fund. We can choose to pull some of those general fund projects if we want to. That's something that I think at this point, that's, that's our next step in, in those ARPA funds is do we want to take the first tranche, the 4 million that's sitting in the bank and allocate them to the shovel-ready water and sewer projects? And then that gives us between now and next August to determine how we want to spend the second 4 million. It may be water and sewer as well. It may be some combination of, of, of whatever we can do in the general fund. At this point, I mean, don't have to have an, an answer tonight, but it would be beneficial for us to sit down with, with our grant administration folks and kind of give them some direction on what we are thinking. And so if we, if we are thinking we want to go the, the utility route with, with the first tranche of ARPA money, then we can come back to you in January with a listing of shovel-ready projects that we're ready to hit the road with.
But are we sure we can use that money?
And that is, that is something that we're, that, that is a category, but that is something that, that, and one of the reasons that we have, we have brought this contract to y'all tonight is because we want somebody that knows, and they know that they know that they know what we can do this, with these funds. And so that will be one of the first things that we do after we, after we sign this contract is sit down with those folks and say, look, this is what we're looking at. Is this good? Is this great? Are we ready to roll? And then we can bring y'all that listing.
Are those, the 4 million dollars' worth of shovel-ready projects, were those projects that were included in the tier-one presentation?
Yes. And they are going to be part of those items in the water and sewer that are under miscellaneous water or miscellaneous sewer or in the water fund. There was one item, it was called major water lines, and I was going to ask you if some of those. So it's going to be part of those. So as you look at that, those 2 million annual for five years, that would be reduced if we use some of this, this ARPA money for that. So at the end of the day, the 69 million dollars doesn't necessarily mean tier-one utilities that we're going to be, you know, spending 69 million dollars of our money, surely not upfront and not all our money. So if, if we choose to use the whole 8 million, then, then that drops that down to, you know, 61 over a five-year period. And then we're going to look at other grants and, and that type of thing. So, yeah.
So do you have what you need from us?
I think they need to know how we, she needs to know how we feel about.
On the first 4 million, are y'all, it, it, where, which way is the wind blowing? Or are we wanting to try to do utility projects with the first tranche of it and then give us some time to look at?
Assuming that it's allowable, I, I would be in favor of doing that. Since that's sort of the biggest ticket, most immediate need in the CIP.
Okay. So, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll meet with, with our, our grant administrators, kind of hash out what we can and can't do, and then we will bring to y'all a listing of those projects that we're proposing to use that first 4 million on. Yes, ma'am?
I even, if we could, use some of those other dollars for, for the utility fund to reduce some of those costs like the COVID dollars, that million, if there any, if there's anything else out of there.
That, that unfortunately is general fund money and because it was a reimbursement for fire and police time. Yeah.
But I, I love using the ARPA.
Yeah.
All, all 8 million, but we can start with.
Well, we'll, okay. Well, we'll proceed down that road then and, and bring y'all some, some, some options for that. So, last slide. So here, we're just going to go to a recap of this because this, and some of these answers I've already gotten. So tonight, we have gone through what, what staff has presented as our, our proposed tier-one, tier-two, tier-three items. As part of a method to advance this entire project, I would like some feedback on what y'all want us to present next. Do y'all want further workshops on individual items? Do y'all want a workshop to dig into street? Do you want a workshop to dig into drainage? Do you want to assign tiers? Do you, do y'all want the option of telling, you know, us that y'all do not, y'all don't agree with these tiers, let's have a discussion on that? What is the next step of input that y'all want to direct us? Because at this point, whatever that we can do to, to, you know, provide more information for y'all to make these decisions as they come along and then in the next, in the next early part of 2022 would be wonderful. So are you wanting further workshops to get into the weeds on some of these big projects or not? So that's, that's kind of one thing. We talked about the property acquisition, the grant management contract. So we've talked in every fund that one of the funding mechanisms is the potential for there being grants out there. Currently, we do not have a in-house grant coordinator. We tried to, to hire, we had that position open for 17, 18 months, and we were unable to, to find anybody qualified for that position. What we would like to do is knowing that, especially what's with, what's going on in, in, in the federal government today, we feel like there are going to be opportunities to fund some of this stuff with grants. What we would like to do is similar to what we've done with the ARPA grant administration, we would like to, to do an RFP to find a grant administration company to handle city grants. Look for us grants, write us grants, administer our grants. And so we feel like there is money out there. We just need somebody to go find it for us. And so that would be also something that we would love to get an RFP on the street early in the, in the next part of the year to bring y'all a proposed contract, to have someone look at, look at funding a portion of this 175 million dollars with as much grant money as possible.
Is that paid for on, on a contingency?
So depends on, on the grants. Some of the larger grants, it is part of, of the, the grant itself. So a, an administrator is a portion of the grant. Now, what we are going to need, it depends on how far down the, let me, if we, if we're wanting to hire somebody to do all of our grants and it's a $10,000 library grant, then, then it's going to be some, some money out of the city coffers. But that'd be part of, of the RFP processes for them to kind of give us some direction on which type of grants that they're willing to, to, to administer and, and go out for us. And then which of those, like I said, some of those larger, the CDBG, those types of things, a percentage of the contract is for grant services.
Any issues with moving forward with that? Getting a RFP? Did you see what's available through, through that?
Perfect.
We're about out of time, so that's why we've got to move it along.
Nope, you're good. So we talked about the utility rate study, ARPA, we're good. I think y'all have. Thank y'all. I am so sorry it took so long, but this was a lot that we went through. And I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't think we were going to get through all of the funds tonight, so good job.
We're totally done, right? We get to go home?
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Need a break? We're going to take a short break and we'll be right back with you to begin our regular meeting. We're going to take a short break and we'll be right back with you to begin our regular meeting.
...funding administered by the U.S. Department of the Treasury and other, or other federal or state agency. Finance director.
Haven't seen y'all in a while. So we actually went through the RFP process last month for our ARPA Administration Services. It's a very detailed and very specific RFP process. The mayor served on that review committee. I think he probably appreciates the, the review process for our bids now because it was very cumbersome. There were three very large bids to, to review and score. We received three RFP responses, one from Grant Works, one from Gary Trailer and Associates, and one from Lakefront Community Management Services. We had a review committee that was advised, I mean, was comprised of the mayor, the city manager, me, the engineer in training, and our new purchasing specialist. We each reviewed all three of the responses. We had a very detailed listing of, of scoring criteria to look at each of those. After that, we, we met and we compiled our scores. And Grant Works Incorporated was the, the, the service that we have proposed that we proceed with to provide our administration services for the ARPA money. Just as a side note, that those costs are bid based on a percentage of our allocation. It is part of the, the funding mechanism for the ARPA money. So the Grant Works, like I said, was, was the one that we have chosen. And their fee was a 4.8% of our allocation of the 8.1 million dollars. And if you have any questions, I will be happy to, to answer those.
Let's see, I guess first we'd look for any, any public comment. Okay. Counsel, questions? Anyone want to start, Mr. Bolden?
No, no question. I, I, I didn't realize that Grant Works was part of the bidding process, but their community involvement, I've been, when I go to TML meetings, they're always, they even come to our city council meeting years ago, so.
Ms. Bellinger?
Just out of curiosity, were they, all the percentages 4.8%?
No, the, they all ranged between 4.6 and 5%. The, the cost, of course, was I think a 20% of the total scoring. And I believe that the scoring sheet was in your packet so that if you have any detailed questions. But yeah, the proposed cost was, was a 20% of the overall. It's basically, the rest of it is looking at their experience in these types of areas and their work history.
Have you done the math on what that 4.8% is? Because I'll tell you after what you just put it through my brain isn't going to do that.
Yes, I will. It's $389,800. And I was going, I just had a thought that I was going to tell y'all and it escapes me, so I don't know. Sorry. There's a lot going on in my brain right now, too.
You did ask us to do our homework ahead of time, so.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Anderson?
No, no questions.
Do I have a motion for approval of 8A?
So move.
Move, Ms. Bellinger. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? All right, we'll move to B. Discuss and consider a donation from Pilgrims Pride. Agree upon acceptance of $215,000, authorize city manager execute an agreement. Community Services Director. Hello, Mr. Bray.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Brian Bray, your Community Services Director. In February of this year, City Council accepted $478,000 from Pilgrims Pride, Pilgrims Hometown Strong Grant Program. And that covered improvements to our Sportsplex and renamed the Sportsplex the Pilgrim's Sportsplex. Those projects were restroom, improved fencing, safety lighting, field netting, a scoreboard, and improvements to the parking areas. Staff recently found out that we were also granted an additional $215,000 from the same program, from Pilgrims Hometown Strong Program. And those improvements would be to improve ADA, or rather to install ADA-compliant sidewalks, improve field drainage, and purchase new soccer goals and nets. And so, Mayor, if council agrees to accept these funds this evening, we would simply roll these into the existing ones that we already have going on. We've been able to accomplish a couple of those from that first round of grants. We have some of them that are in the design phase and some of them that are under bid. So, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions after a public comment.
It should be an easy one. Any public comment? Okay, any comment from council?
He already knows how I feel about this. I use those soccer fields a lot.
Now, what is the use of that field predominantly?
Primarily adult soccer. We also have allowed SFA club soccer to use that on several occasions. It's also been the site of several Hispanic Championship League games. And that's where we're kind of going with that is it's, hopefully in the long run, it'll be the premier soccer fields outside of SFA's fields where everybody wants to come and host their championship games.
Councilmember Anderson and I had our last game of the season on Sunday. Yeah, mhm. Not against each other. He stopped all my goals the last time we played. I'm just wondering where, I mean, did they just wake up one morning and say, oh, here's another $215,000? Or how that came about?
So they chose projects that we originally submitted over a year ago and then came back and said, hey, we would like to award you additional funds. And that was, we didn't ask questions, we just said, yes, thank you, we appreciate it.
Right. Ms. Bellinger?
No questions.
No.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve a regular gen item A, B.
B, great, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those approved, same sign. Thank you. Move to C. Consider approval of resolution for establishing and appointing members to an Advisory Comprehensive Plan Review Committee and Downtown Master Plan Review Committee. City Manager, Canizares.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Mario Canizares, City Manager. Just wanted to go over a few slides with you about going through the, hopefully going through the appointment process of the various advisory committees that we have been proposing. Both of those are, are the ones for the downtown plan and for the comprehensive land use plan. You've seen these slides before, but just to kind of reiterate, since, since we have members of the, of the public here and then those may be watching on the committee responsibilities. Certainly, if, as a committee member, whether it's a committee member here or you're a board member representing any of our respective advisory boards, maintaining regular attendance is, is key, staying engaged and being participatory in the process. The point of the committee is to certainly be, to represent, to stay connected with folks in the community in the planning process. The intent is for them to provide guidance and direction to the staff and the consultant along throughout the process. So as input is provided and ideas are brought forward to, to be able to vet those ideas and make sure that, that, that input is given so, so that we can, again, proceed moving forward with those recommendations if, if needed. Again, just mentioned about the recommendations. A lot of times, committee members, just because of their connections in the community, they can serve as hosts, they can also facilitate meetings that certainly staff can't, certainly consulting won't be able to because of the fact that they're not, they're not here locally all the time. But, but there is opportunities where, where those committee members can open doors that we just can't. So that's important. Also, too, to be able to hard, to reach out to hard-reach populations. Again, just because they may not be available, they may have difficulties in attending meetings or, or because of schedules or language barriers. Certainly, I would hope that our committee members would be able to help us in that regard and, again, stay engaged in the process. And then certainly obtain decorum at all time, at all times. We talked about this at your, at your council meeting back in November, that certainly the city council would appoint all the members of the committee. You would also appoint a chair and a vice chair of each of these committees. All these committees are open to the, all these meetings are open to the public. Again, a quorum is a simple majority of those that are there to conduct business. We had mentioned about, and you all agreed to, to have council members be represented, represented on these committees, excluding the mayor. If you recall, you all assigned Councilmember Fisher and Councilmember Anderson on the downtown committee. Councilmembers Bolden and Bellinger on the, the Comprehensive Land Use Committee. And again, those council members are there to serve as resources and are voting members of the committee, but also keep those connections so that as things progress, you all have direct ties in as to what's going on firsthand with those, with those, with those meetings. We talked about before about how do ideas and recommendations, how do they get moved forward? You all landed on the, the use of consensus as a means to move ideas forward to the next level. And then to that end, as drafts are completed through this process, then they would be recommended to the respective boards, whether it's the comp plan on the Planning and Zoning Commission or the downtown master plan on the Main Street, Main Street Board. That's what those, those, those recommendations would move forward. And then the other thing that you'd mentioned, too, that what you wanted to see was, at the end of this process, you would like to see some form or fashion where the, whether it's these, this, these two committees or some committees, in, in essence, to be more of an oversight, to ensure that progress is made on whatever recommendations are made through the process. So if there are specific goals that are laid out as part of this process, at the end of the conclusion of the process, that, that there would be some semblance of a, of a group structure, a committee that keeps track on the progress that's being made, or not made. In that way, there's sort of an accountability function with that. So here's the committee makeup. It's increased in size. Last time when we met back in early November, you all had recommended that we add some additional representation. And so with that, I took those to heart. And so based on the direction you all gave, you wanted to have for both groups, representation from the Bryant Foundation, a person from, on each committee, a representative from the PAL, excuse me, the Park Advocacy League, I just shortened it for PAL. Representatives from the Federation of the Women's Group is also in there as well. And also SFA student, along with the 10 members from the community that, that you all had proposed. So with that being said, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Committee has increased to about 20 people and the downtown master plan, folks, has increased to 19. One thing I would like to at least bring up to council, and it's just, just an idea that I had, and, and again, this may seem strange, but I would like to counsel just to think about, and again, on the SFA student, the representative on the SFA student on both of the committees. Certainly, we need to get input from the students. There will definitely be input from the students just because of the makeup of our, of, of these committees. We have plenty of SFA representation on that. And I, and I have no doubt that we'll be able to get representation and input from the students. But just a question I have is, is having SFA students on each of these committees as it is... But just question I have is, is having SFA students on each of these committees as a dec, as a decision maker. Uh, again, I'm not saying it's problematic, but just the transient nature of students because of they may transfer, uh, they may withdraw from college, or they may graduate. Um, it, it just, it can just create challenges if they leave and then do, is the expectation is that we always have a represent, an SFA student on the committee, um, and, and, and trying to keep that student up to speed on things as, as the committees progress. And so, that's just something I'd like to bring up and just see if, if you are, certainly want to maintain that status and I'm happy to do so. But I just wanted to bring that as sort of a, a cautionary thing of, of, you know, you want to consider, uh, maybe not including an SFA student on the governance piece of it, or the, the board itself or the committee structure itself. But certainly, we're not going to diminish input from the SFA, from SFA students. I just wanted to bring that as a, as, uh, just an item for, for your, for, for discussion. Um, here's the makeup of the, of the Comprehensive Land Use, the, the committee members, and I'm not going to read those, they're on the screen. Um, what you see though, uh, in italics are the chair and vice chair that staff is recommending. We are recommending Ken Depish to be the, uh, the chair for the, the Comp Plan Review Committee and, uh, Steel Riot has the vice chair. And the reason we were bringing those two individuals forward, first of all, Mr. Depish is the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He's an attorney, he's land use attorney. Uh, he's well versed in, in these kinds of issues and so, um, being able to facilitate, uh, uh, committees and meetings, uh, he's well versed in that. Mr. Riot is a vice chair, um, you know, is well respected in the community. And so, uh, thought it was appropriate to recommend him as, as, as a recommended vice chair for the comp plan. And then, as I mentioned, the SFA rep, I do not have a name at this point, uh, because of the timing of just, uh, towards the end of the semester with finals and so, uh, if, if we are going to be representing, or excuse me, having an SFA student rep, representative, my suggestion would be that we, if we're going to pursue with that, then I'll be working with, with, with the SFA folks to try to find someone in January. Um, but as you can see, the additional folks that we added, we added, uh, uh, from the Bryant Foundation, Mr. Sutton, Kurt Sutton, uh, from the Parks Advocacy League, Nicole Ivanchik, I believe I pronounced that correctly, and the Federation of Women's Club, Marilyn Walton, for the Comprehensive Land Use, uh, process. Uh, for the downtown committee, uh, again, those, all those additional names. Um, we are, staff is recommending, uh, Miles McCall to be the recommended chair for, for the downtown master plan. Uh, Mr. McCall is the board chair of, of the ma, of the Main Street Board. Also, he, he's participated in a number of, uh, uh, bond committees with the school district and served in a number of capacities, I believe. Uh, he is also a professional facilitator, so he's well versed in, in facilitating, uh, meetings and discussions, things of that nature. Uh, and then for the Bryant Foundation, we, uh, included Greg Williams as a recommended vice chair. Mr. Williams is well respected in the community, he's a banker, a lot of bankers on this, but he's a banker and, but he's, uh, but well respected and, and certainly wo, working with the Bryant Foundation and their huge investment that they've made in our community these many years, uh, we thought it was important to have that representation. As you had mentioned too, at the, at the meeting in November, about adding some additional representation, as I mentioned, we got Mr. Williams from the Bryant Foundation, Brandy Cartwright from the Parks Advocacy League, A- Advocacy League, uh, Betty Shin from the Federation of Women's Club, and as I'd mentioned before, the SFA student rep to be determined at a later date. So, um, at your place, you also have a, a, a revised, uh, resolution. I, I will tell you, there are a couple of things that had come up, uh, that I noticed after the id, or actually really one thing that I noticed after the item was published in your packet. Uh, you had described last time when we met back in November about the continuation of the committees and so, it was my apology, I inadvertently did not mention, passed that on to the city attorney. And so, in your original, uh, pa, in the original piece of information that was included in your packet, it showed that the committee sunsetted. And so, what I've included at your place, and it's highlighted in yellow, that the committee could be reconstituted as a plan oversight committee. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, it's in the, it's in the last whereas and then it's in, uh, section four, excuse me, section five of, of the resolution. And then another item that had come up, uh, just in conversations earlier today with, with Councilmember Anderson was, um, a, about the potential of replacing a position if someone resigned. And, and again, that could happen early on, uh, a person gets transferred for a job, or they move, or, you know, just life happens and so they have to withdraw, uh, from the process. And so, he had just called me, and again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Anderson, but he had called me earlier and just said, you know, are there some options for considering, um, potential replacement? You don't want to get too far down and, towards the end of the process and try to replace somebody. But if you're the first month or two or three of the process and someone leaves, withdraws, resigns from that, for whatever reason, uh, it would be good to have that option of, of replacing that person. So what you have highlighted is that if, if a committee member is no longer willing to serve or is removed, the committee member may be replaced, or the position could be left vacant. So it leaves it kind of open-ended. But that allows the council to, uh, we would certainly come to you all when we have that vacancy, if that, if that does happen. And, uh, we would make a recommendation to try to replace that with another person. So I just wanted to make sure you had that as part of resolution because you didn't, you didn't have that, uh, you didn't have those changes, uh, in your packet. So, uh, so action and really next steps, uh, really from our end i- is to a, approve the resolution that's, that's you had in your packet, but now that it's at your place, based on those changes that I, that I brought forward to you. Um, I would ask that you, um, also appoint the chair and vice chair that staff is recommending so that we can move forward. Uh, and then ultimately, um, we are planning a kickoff meeting for tomorrow for the downtown plan at, at four P M. over at the Recreation Center and we'll do something likewise with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan on the ninth at four P M. And the intent of those two meetings is really just to hand out to the committee members, um, a, actually a couple of binders. One binder is the actual plans themselves, uh, so they actually have a copy of the adopted plans, whether it's the downtown plan from nineteen seventy-four or the Comprehensive Land Use Plan from two thousand and three. They, they would actually have a copy of that. And then the second binder would be really just more of a roster, uh, a resource list with the con, with contact information from staff, um, a, a copy of, of a presentation that we'll make that goes over just the governance components that we just covered here just a few moments ago with, with their responsibilities and, and, and their charge. Um, a, and then just provide resources to them in a binder. Uh, really, that's the intent, is just kicking it off, uh, tomorrow. So we expect it to be hopefully a relatively, uh, short meeting, not a whole lot of business to conduct. It's really just to, again, kick the process off, uh, before we break for Christmas holidays. Uh, and then the other change that we were looking to do, um, and then just in conversations that I'd had with a member of the community about, uh, potentially having the, the committee meet with a consultant that we're recommending with DTJ. So, so what we are recommending is that we have both committees meet separately, but on the same day, on the thirteenth. We would recommend that the, that the Comprehensive Land Use, uh, Committee meet at eleven A M. It'd be a working lunch on the thirteenth at the rec center. Uh, and then we would have a, a very same meeting, uh, with the downtown committee, I believe at three P M. at the rec center. And so, again, that is an op, opportunity for, for the committee members and the chair, chair, vice chair, excuse me, the chair and vice chair to meet with, with the consultant team. Uh, uh, the, the project managers for the process, uh, cer, certainly with city staff and, and really just start to, hopefully start to, to, to gel and start to work together, hopefully on a successful project. And that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Is there public comment regarding this item? Yes. Come, come forward, please, and to the podium.
Hi, I'm Lynn Clark.
Thank you.
Lynn Clark.
Thank you.
It's thirty-four ninety-six County Road nine fifteen. Uh, I have two questions. Um, I've, I could be wrong, but I thought that in prior meetings, it had been discussed that the city council members would not be voting members on the committees. Was that right?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, but that's certainly a good point that we need to, we, we need to consider.
I thought, of course, we can go through all the, the videos and see, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that that was right.
Mayor, it was one of the options that was presented to you all and you all, uh, landed on being voting members.
Okay.
Okay.
But thank you, yeah, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll deliberate on that. Thank you.
And my, my other question is, um, it's the, second to the last point on here, it says meet with consultant on twelve thirteen. So I'm assuming that's a consultant with the firm, right, DTJ?
That's of the proposed consultant, correct.
Who we don't have a contract with.
Correct.
So, I'm wondering, how does that work?
It's, it's, it's again, part of their presentation process. They're, they're gonna, they're gonna meet with us and then we're gonna decide in January whether or not to, to, to use them. I'm sorry.
So it's not a contractual thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the, uh,
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
The, uh, as far as for the, for the, uh, the consultant on Monday, there is a fee, it's a six thousand dollar fee to, to have the consultant come. I mean, so, again, if we remember, one of the things that we brought forward to you back in early November was to bring the ultimate contract for you all to consider. And so, again, uh, based on just conversations I had with some folks in the community about potentially, uh, delaying a little bit and, and have the committees meet, maybe have the opportunity for the consultant to work with the committee early on before the agreement is approved. Um, uh, and I thought there was some, I thought there was, there was some merit in the suggestion. And so, uh, by delaying that, uh, to January the eighteenth potentially as far as the contract approval, there will be a fee for, for the consultant.
Did you say six thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what does that entail? Like, is that, because there were, there was one consult, I mean, there's the, like, the main consultant and then they have their subs. Is that a, a person from each?
No, ma'am, it, it, it's gonna be the, the, the pro, the project leads from, from DTJ. So it would be, uh, Franz Wadcock and, and, um, and I don't remember the other person's full name, but, but they would be there to, to be working with, with you all to just do some initial, really just initial work with, 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 with the committees. Okay.
Ju- just two people?
It's two people along with the folks from KSA and two fifteen consulting, which are the local. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
So what's that six thousand dollar price tag? Because my brain, I'm, I'm having trouble wrapping my brain around how they can charge straight face six thousand dollars for two people to come on two days.
Well,
One day, right?
Well, t, two, for the downtown and the comp. Oh, no, but it's one day.
Right. Well, uh, I mean, it is, it is a fee for their, for their time to come here to Nacogdoches from, from the Dallas area. So it's inclusive of their time and, and plus just travel expenses.
Okay.
That does feel a little steep.
Let's, let's finish with comments from the, from the public, please. Anyone else? Yes.
Hey, Council, Matt Moore, two sixteen North Church Street. I'm pretty nervous, I'll admit that. Uh, this is exciting and, uh, I think this is gonna be a, a great thing. And I know that, uh, y'all have been working really hard on this. Uh, I sent you an email and I won't go over that email again, uh, except for the last part that I believe, um, these committees, as they begin to get formed, uh, we should think about pushing back the date that we actually hire the contractor and have the, uh, committees forum get together, review the plan that's gonna be given to them. And over a period of a couple of months, maybe three months, or however long it takes them, to actually produce a, a, not too long, but a, a su, sufficient report that kind of lays out what they believe for the problems with the existing plan. What they see is the future of Nacogdoches, that is a basic guideline, uh, before we move forward with that plan, rather than bringing the consultants in right now, that, um, it would just be the work because my fear that's gonna happen is exactly the same thing that happened twenty years ago. Uh, we, the city actually had an, an, of, an emergency, a meeting to hurry up and do the plan. We rushed through the plan, we had thirty-five or so citizens involved in that process. And then we never implemented that. And the reason I believe that was is because there was no real commitment from the, the, the citizens to, to say, well, we put all this work and this money and it didn't get implemented. Now, why don't we, you know, spend the, spend a couple of months? We could have started, you know, back in January and it would already been done. But there's no hurry to do a long-term master plan. We're not in a hurry. And if we get this, this, this group together and they spend the time, and there's a lot of really brilliant people in there. There's PhDs, there's lawyers, there's college professors, there's bankers. All those people are, are good writers. And all they can, and all I'm saying is, why don't we have like a ten or fifteen page report? We reviewed the, we reviewed the plan, this chapter is, we need a new, redo this chapter, we need a no, new chapter here. These are the problems with the old plan. Then we'll have an understanding of why we need this new plan. Uh, I'm not opposed to doing the planning process, you know, but I just think that we're bringing in the big guns before we've done the work upfront. And I would really appreciate if a direction to the, uh, to the committees was to produce a written report. That's the thing, and we can always refer back to that twenty years from now, we can refer back and say, well, we see here the written pla, written plan. It was given to the P and C, it was given to the city council and they approved it and then we went forward. And I just think that would really add a, a lot of value to the, you know, to making sure that the process actually, uh, you know, resulted in a better Nacogdoches rather than, because I had no doubt the idea that DTJ is gonna do a beautiful plan. You know, they're professionals and, and the, and the piece of work that they give us in the end is gonna be beautiful. But the issue is not the plan. I mean, anybody can go buy a plan. The issue is spending, having a long-term commitment to implementing that plan. And if this, this committee has put in that upfront time, then I think that they will, uh, say, hey, remember back, you know, four years ago? We did that plan and now you're doing this? We're not, we're not going along with the plan. So, anyway, I hope y'all consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else? Any other public comment?
And I'm simple, I don't really understand all this, but it seems weird, I'm Brad Mall.
Derek, thank you, thank you, sir.
Seven thirty-five Mound Street. It seems odd to me that you would bring the consultant in before you voted on the contract. And before you've, I mean, that's a, that's like, you're a banker. So would you fund a loan before you approved the loan? That seems odd to me. And it seems hurried because of Christmas holidays and New Year's Eve and you're not voting until January eighteenth. It seems to me that once you vote for it and approved it and everybody's like, yes, we're all on board, that's when we should meet with the consultant. Especially if we're paying money for them now, that seems like it's pre-approved. So maybe you should take the vote tonight, or it just seems backwards to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Anyone else? Okay. Council? Any thoughts? Who wants to go first?
Well, I'll start.
Okay.
Um, there are a couple of questions that I have. I, I have some similar concerns about having, um, a student representative on the committees um, for roughly the same reasons as Mr. Canizares mentioned. Um, and it ties into the idea of kind of having a breakover point at which it is counterproductive, I think, to replace a member who leaves one of the committees. Um, and that is that once you get six, seven, eight months into the process, um, if that student transfers, if that student is gone for a prolonged period of time on a holiday, um, there, you know, you end up with somebody having to try to catch up and we can't, you know, the idea is not to have, have to get people up to speed constantly. Um, now, I, I do think that if someone has to resign a position, um, from a committee early on, um, in the process, that, uh, that it makes sense for us to be able to replace, um, those members with a student, that becomes more complicated. Um, at this point, we don't know how we would choose that student. Um, we don't know whether that student will be around for the duration because I assume we're still looking at, once a contract is signed, at least a sixteen-month process on the, the comp plan. Is that? Is that roughly accurate? Um, and to to ask, and I think to a certain degree, you know, a student may commit to it, but, um, in reality, to ask them to be here for potentially multiple meetings a month for a year and a half, um, is probably not realistic, um, in my opinion. And, uh, given that we, at this point, have no idea how we'd even choose that student, um, from what body that student would come on campus, um, you know, I, I, I'm just sort of venting my concerns about having that representation on the, the committees. And obviously, student input, input is going to be a huge part of formulating the plan, or plans. But the idea of having a student representative on there, to me, seems problematic because if someone transfers, um, that sort of thing, once we're six months in the process, then we're, we're kind of beyond the point at which we could realistically replace them effectively, I think. That is one of my concerns. The other of my concerns is that, now, are we, are we proposing that these committees hold, um, sort of hard and fast votes? Or are we still approaching it from a, a consensus standpoint?
It's consensus, but I mean, I think the, the premise is that, that, excuse me, the premise would be that the council's a participant in that, in, in that process. So, I mean, obviously, you, you all have, you all have tremendous amount of insight because of what you all do for, you know, as you, as you all serve as council members and what you hear and see and so, but, but definitely to, to, again, when I say voting members, to move, I would assume, and again, I'm not the facilitator, or excuse me, the, the chair, but I would assume the chair after an issue is, is discussed and is ready to, it's like call a vote, but just to get consensus on moving something forward. I think you all need to be a part of, part of that and not just sit silent on the sidelines. I think you should, should, should be able to give your, 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 your opinion.
Now, if, if we were going to be having, you know, count votes, um, on, uh, on issues, then I, I would have more concerns about council members being involved with that. Um, because I, I think that, that takes away the, a lot of the autonomy that I think these committees should have, um, in my opinion. If it is, if it is merely, you know, effectively there as a liaison and an information source and, um, you know, sort of a, a part of a larger consensus, that's, that's a different issue. And I, I don't have a problem with that. So that, that answers my question there. The only other question I had is, is the language, um, in section two um, stating that, that members can be removed with or without cause. Um, and I'm curious, and this may be a better question for you, Mr. Kirkland, why the language without cause in there?
It's part of your prerogative as council members?
Okay. Cause I, again, that, that to me takes away some of the autonomy. And I, just from my perspective, I would prefer not to, to have just that, that little bit of language, the without cause. With cause, absolutely. Um, if someone is being disruptive or hindering the process, um, absolutely, we should have, have the ability to remove them. But, but removing them without cause, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure I even understand the point of having that language in there.
So there, your, your preference would be to remove the words with or without cause?
Yes, yes.
Um, the problem with putting a cause requirement is you've got to define a process to challenge that cause.
Okay. Okay, now, from that perspective, I do understand that, yes.
Suggesting that they have a property interest in being on the committee and they don't. So your prerogative is to appoint them, your prerogative is to take them away.
Right.
There, I mean, the check on that is the ballot box.
Right, right. Okay, I mean, from that perspective, it, it makes sense in that we, as you said, we would have to build in a process and, and potentially an appeal process and all of that if, if we remove someone. So, you know, rethinking it from that perspective, the, the language does make more sense. You know, I, I would like to assume that, that council would not, would not abuse that ability in any way. And I doubt that anybody up here would, so. Now, it was just some language that concerned me and that, that clarification does help.
Could you clarify a little bit more? Just, I don't wanna interrupt, but since we're on the subject.
No, 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 that, that was all for me.
Okay. Um, I mean, what, on what basis would we have to establish, uh, a, a process by which the person would be removed?
So if you're requiring that they have, you have a cause for taking them off, you have to describe the cause.
Right. But there's no, I mean, it's not like there's like some sort of like due process concern or something where they get a hearing and, right? I mean, it would just be, what would, what would it be beyond defining cause? Which I think that we're perfectly capable of doing.
So it would be setting up the possibility of a due process challenge. I don't think they would have a due process claim. But it's just being fully transparent with your members that, you, you don't have a expectation to serve here. You're serving because we put you here and you have something to bring and we want you to bring it.
Okay.
So when you tell them simply cause, then the next question somebody's gonna ask you is, how do you prove that? What's the process for getting there? And by putting without cause, you don't have to mess with that. The folks who are on your committee are all great individuals who are deeply committed. And I seriously doubt this would ever come up.
Right.
But if it did, you also wouldn't want to be hampered in exercising your political will and getting there.
Okay.
So that's what it's about.
Mr. Anderson was finished. Any, any other comments?
Are you asking me? Yes, I do. On the, um, SFA student, I was the one that pushed to have, um, somebody from, an SFA student, um, on each committee. And I haven't changed my mind about that. I think that the concerns brought up about whether a student might transfer are the same as if you were to say whether someone is to find a job and, and leave Nacogdoches. Um, I also, you know, it, it hasn't been attempted yet, but I don't actually think that it would be that difficult to find a student who can, as much as any other person can say that they're committed to seeing this process through and are planning on staying at the university. I don't think that that would be very difficult. I was a very organized college student and was in a lot of organizations. Shocker. And I, um, a- a- and I would've been at those meetings. I, I don't, I really don't think that, that, that the concerns brought up about an SFA student aren't concerns that can be, um, also directed toward every single other, um, representative of any other group that we're putting on. And I mean, the same can be said, you know, when you, when, when we say, well, the, the student body opinion is gonna be taken into consideration because we have built-in opportunity for community engagement. Again, you could say that about every single other representative of every other single stakeholder, community that we have, um, on these committees. And so my preference is that, is that they stay. They're a major part of, of our community. I know that nobody's saying that, but I think that the, the, the same reasoning for having somebody from the Bright Foundation or, I mean, just as an example, or from, um, any particular stakeholder group, that same exact reasoning can be applied to the SFA student. And along the lines, I, I understand we're at twenty and nineteen people. And at some point, committees get too large that, that it's just not workable. And I get that, um, you know, but talking about taking people off and putting people on, I do see some, to me now, glaring, um, lack of, of, of representation of, of particular communities that, um, that have been brought to my attention, um, that, that does concern me. And so if we're still discussing makeup of communities and representatives of, of X or Y stakeholder, you know, then when you look at the, the committees, we got a couple, everyone got a couple of emails about this. I've heard from other people as well. There isn't anybody from the environment side of it, which is important. And, a- and a couple of other things. So I don't know at what point we're opening up, again, discussion about what representatives from what groups we wanna have on committees and what we're taking off. That's my comment about that. On the appointing committee chairs, and this is nothing against the proposed, um, the, the, the proposed appointments because I know and like all of them and think that they would be more than capable. Um, I do think that it's weird. Going back to Councilmember, um, Anderson's point about the autonomy of each committee, I think that city staff recommending and city council appointing the chair and vice chair is weird, given that we're placing so much faith in, in the committees themselves. And my preference there would actually be for the committee to choose. I also wanna discuss a little bit, um, and this is a question, um, what we mean by consensus. I know that we touched on it a little bit when we talked about whether we wanted it to be voting, three, fours, majority, whatever. Because it seems like it's a, it seems like, no, it is a more nuanced term, I think. I mean, I, I, I think it's different from negotiating, uh, um, a decision. A- and so I, I wanna discuss what we mean by that and so that we're all on the same page, particularly if it's gonna be part of this resolution. Um, and I don't know if now is a good time.
I think now is more than, you know, just as good as any, uh, you know, I'd put this together just kind of at the last minute. Uh, you have it on your screens. Again, I'm sure there's been volumes and volumes of literature written about consensus building. And so I, by, by far, I'm not an expert in that, but, 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 you know, it is a process. I mean, it is a process of, of a group that comes to general agreement on issues. I know there's probably, in some respect, there's probably, whether it's used correctly or incorrectly, it, uh, some people could use, could say consensus is synonymous with, with compromise. It's not necessarily, sometimes compromise is, is, is a process that you use when you bring someone sort of intermediary to arbitrate an issue because you're trying to get to sort of an agreement on, some people win, you lose a win, you win some, you lose some, and you come out of a process and, and again, you, you establish compromise. Uh, I mean, consensus, uh, again, is just one of those things that, that, uh, it's a gen- it, it can be more of an art than a science to some degree. What, what it takes to get there, and again, just a few bullets there that I've just, uh, had put together, it's, it's, uh, it's about collaboration within the group, about being open-minded, having flexibility, uh, having cooperation amongst participants, uh, providing people time so they can provide input in the process, being, you know, active listening, uh, and seeking input from others and participation from all people. And then at the end, when a process or a decision is ready to be made, um, that the group can support it. It may mean something that, that they may not a hundred percent agree on whatever the proposal may be, but they can generally go along with it. There may be a situation where they can't. And maybe what you do is you approve the things, or not you, but the committee approves the things that there is general agreement on, and you focus on the things that they don't until you get to a point that someone has some level of agreement. And that they can't, then, you know, then it's beyond me. I don't know what to do at that point, you know? Is it because they're not being flexible? Is it because they're not open-minded? They, they're, they're not listening, they're ignoring everyone? I, I, I don't know. I mean, it just depends on the situation. But, I mean, when you all go through your workshops, you don't take, you don't take votes. You go around the dais and you say, how do you wanna proceed? It's just like we did today with the CIP discussion that Ms. Kerbo presented. How do you wanna proceed with, with moving some things forward? And I know there's not a hundred percent agreement on certain things, whether Ms. Bellinger mentioning that she's still unsure about the fire station. That's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. We're not asking anybody to vote on that, something. It's just, how do we advance the conversation so that we can reach a decision at some point down the road? And the intent with these committees is to push recommendations to the next level so that there is the voting boards. The voting boards meaning the Main Street Board. A voting board meaning your advisory board, Planning and Zoning Commission. And at that point, they will be taking votes to push a recommendation to eventually this body. And then you, at some point, will take a vote to approve or deny whatever recommendations or plans that are presented to you.
Okay.
If, if I could add to that.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I love, uh, the, the fact that you were bringing in what happens when people don't agree because you're actually distilling out pieces of, and some of those are the most valuable discussions that you can have. You're distilling out, what are the issues that we still need to figure out? And, um, to me, one of the, the greatest values of consensus is when you distill out that issue, sometimes then you can go and get further information. So it's not just taking a vote or not taking a vote. So you might wanna have an ad hoc committee who might go into look, look into environmental issues to then come back to inform the whole committee. So, um, generally, in my experience, that people then reach a fuller consensus by delving deeper. And that's the reason why I shy away from just, you know, take a vote and, too bad, you lost again, you know, it's
And you make a good
Cause then you can figure out solutions.
And you make a good point, Councilmember, because, you know, these, don't get me wrong, these are, these are, this is a large body on both sides. Twenty, twenty people, nineteen people, it's, it's large. It, it's, it's, if you recall, it was originally nine and we've doubled over the last several months. And so, uh, but we do have the opportunity, because we do have a larger group, to break up into subcommittees. There may be a topic that gets brought forward. I don't know what it could be, but a, a, a topic that gets brought forward, an idea. And, and it's an opportunity for a subgroup, whether they may be subject matter experts, or maybe they're not, but allows them to go dig, dig deeper, as Councilmember Bellinger mentioned, on that topic and go get input from environmental groups. It could be folks that are involved with the park system or trail system, or whatever the case may be. But you're able to go get more input and seek feedback on a specific issue, a specific issue. And then you do, they do their research and then bring that to the full committee and present, working with the consultants or the lean staff, but bring back what, what, um, what they discovered. And then again, present it with some options. And I know you have to go, Councilmember, is there anything, other questions you have?
No, no, that, I, I've gotten all my bits.
And so, um, and, and so, anyway, so that is an opportunity because we do have a larger group that we can eas- somewhat easily break up into smaller groups and go tackle a specific issue and then bring it back to the full committee. Because it can be a challenge if you've got nineteen people and try to, all nineteen people tackling major issues. Sometimes you just have to break it out into chunks, um, just to move, move, move the thing forward and be more efficient with people's time. So that's just my thought. Again, it's not perfect, but that's just how the process I've experienced in working in larger committees is break up into subgroups.
Okay. And that's helpful and it actually, you, talking through consensus and the way that, that we're defining it and thinking of it seems to me to to point to the need for allowing the group to spend time together. Because if we're throwing twenty people together and and expecting them to be able to work together when they haven't before and, and, and reach consensus on things, it seems like establishing a group dynamic and working together is, will be important and foundational for reaching that consensus. And, and so, in that vein, you, you know, I do think that it, that what Mr. Moore mentioned in his public comment about getting the group together his public comment about getting the group together and having them work on something, whether it's reviewing the old plan and getting familiar with it, as opposed to just handing people a binder and expecting or hoping that they read it, and maybe they don't, because, you know, people have careers and lives and whatever. But actually giving some sort of assignment of going through it, whether that ends up in a written report or a discussion of where was this good, where could we have done better, what would implement, you know, these kinds of things that I think would, some sort of group exercise that I think would help the group come together if we're having that expectation of consensus. And I'm really, I'm just going to be frank about this. I'm really torn about where to go with it because I do, I think that this is important, and I think that we should do this. I think that we should do this plan. I don't want to delay for the sake of delaying. But I also don't want to overlook work that needs to be done. And, you know, somebody said this, I guess it's neither here nor there, but I know that there's a little bit of frustration because we've been talking about this for months and months. And all of those months and months, committees could have been doing some work on this, right? And so it's a little bit frustrating, I'm sure, to be discussing this now. But I am, I am really torn on that front, on how we allow time for the committees to join together and be able to work together in a way that facilitates consensus. And kind of in the same vein, I, a couple of people have voiced concerns about bringing the consultant and the proposed consultant in before there's a, one, before there's a contract, and two, sort of being involved in just meeting number two. I hear that, and I also, that $6,000 fee is leaving a really bad taste in my mouth. I know that in the sense of, you know, long-term, we can talk about $6,000 in terms of this entire budget maybe not being a huge percentage, but just the fact that they would charge that to come for a day makes me feel icky about them. I think that's all I have, actually.
Thank you. Ms. Bellinger.
Oh, my goodness. So, first of all, this wasn't what I was going to say first, but I agree with you. $6,000 just makes me cringe for a day's fee. But also, I think you make a really good point about having the committees get together, get used to each other, think through. I think, I think the point about looking at the old comprehensive plan, deciding, you know, what's been helpful, where do we need to go, what do we need to think about, and actually even thinking about what this committee wants out of a comprehensive plan. I could see that as an excellent way to start. And I think we have plenty of facilitators, whether we use the facilitators and the chairs that were already selected, or the committees choosing their own chair. I think we have some great facilitators who can look at that discussion. So I would rather postpone the, any visit, and I also don't particularly like having a consultant come when we haven't actually had a con, I've never seen a contract. So this is just, you know, it just bothers my contracting soul, you know, having run contracts. About the student, so when you proposed it before, I'm the one who said, oh, no, I don't think we should have a student. But actually, I, as a student in my master's program in Austin, I worked on Austin's comprehensive plan. So that's my first, you know, did surveys. And particularly if you have a mature student who is interested in this field, and we actually do have some students, I'm thinking of some in particular, who could be very, very helpful. I think I was a little short-sighted in thinking we shouldn't have a student. And even if you had one for the spring semester and had to switch it out for like the fall semester, I think it would work. So if you want me to, I could help look for a student who has this interest and who has that kind of planning. But I actually was very productive in the Austin comprehensive plan about, it was about 400 years ago. So finally, I, one of my concerns may be met if we cancel the visit with the consultant. My, I'm very concerned that people who are not on the committee are able to come and able to listen and participate in, not in the same way that all the committee members can. But one of the reasons that we weren't as concerned about our choices or making sure we had everything balanced out was because these were going to be very open meetings. And right now, at Christmas time, to have two meetings or have, I think that's a huge burden, particularly in a very short time. I would like to have available at the first meeting, for anybody who wants to come, have available for them this current comprehensive plan. So if that's okay, have some extra copies of the plan.
Okay.
Print them out.
Any number? What's your number?
Ten. I know it's a lot of printing, but still, people might use them. I'm just saying, just to have, for people to feel welcome and be able to participate and to be able to think about those things. And I would also like to make sure we have notices and particularly in the daily sentinel, so that people know what's happening, not just on our website, but, and that they're welcome to, you know, to come to the meetings.
Both, or I guess all the meetings would be recorded, just if we have.
Right. But I'm just saying to, so this is, you know, I wasn't sure where the meetings were going to be held, but now I know today that it's at the rec center, but that's just this week. So we, we need some time. So anyway, just to repeat, I don't particularly want to spend the $6,000 fee. I'd rather the committees get to work, working, and they can start thinking about these things. And after Christmas, we can regroup and let the committees tell us what they think and where they want to head to.
The only thing you didn't touch on was the council as voting members. What do you think there?
I mean, because we're doing consensus, I actually think that council members should feel free to participate as a member. They should not be the leaders of the whole thing, but they shouldn't be wallflowers either. So I don't know. So I think they should just be participating members and definitely respect the autonomy of the, of the, of the group. But I think each member can do whatever they need to do. Because we're not going to have votes, votes, so I'm not quite know what the rest of it means. Anything else you have?
I think, I think you've touched on everything I had marked down here. You say appointing chairs, you're okay either way on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever.
Mr. Bolden.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with most of the issues been discussed. As far as the SFA student, I do believe we should have a SFA student on the committee. And if seven months down the line, like even if the student or any other member depart, then what the issues that forward, the new person would be able to go forward with the new issues and not vote on the past issues. So I think that a student should be part of the committee. As far as the consensus, you know, it's just like 51% and things are, you know, passed or whatever. I think it should be like 70%. And then if it's 51%, I think it should go back and have some new research done because it's really not ready to be finalized. And as far as the chairs, I was originally against city council members picking a chair. But after looking at who the chairs are and going back, looking at, doing research, they are, there's no doubt in my mind that we chose the right chairs for those committees. It's a real talent, is diversity, and then people who cares for negative issues. Oh, as far as city council members being able to vote, I was, that was not my understanding to begin with. I was thought it was going to be liaison between the committees, the staff, and the citizens. So I was, I was not looking to be able to do a vote. So. And I know it was mentioned about certain, like environmentalist, if you look at the resumes of the, that were submitted, there's a real talent in all of those in resumes. And then there was a couple of them in there. Their, one of their major concern was the environment. So I do know that we do have a couple of people already in there, according to their resumes.
Let's see, I guess the only thing, so as far as having the consultant be part of that second meeting, what, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, if they don't charge you the money.
Sure, Ms. Bolden, you don't, let me, yeah, sure.
I just also wanted to say, I think I already said this, but I can't remember at this point, but I just have difficulty with somebody who's a potential contractor of us assuming they will be the contractor. Because, I think I did say that, because I haven't even seen it, never mind, I said it. I couldn't remember. Sorry, old age.
Okay. So I guess I would kind of comment on the same things. I think an SFA student needs to be a part of it, even if we lose some continuity there. I think that voice is important. As far as council as voters, I mean, I wanted the council members, and I do appreciate, I'm not a part of it, but I do appreciate the four of you spending the time to do that in addition to our, to our council meetings. But I wanted those council members to be a resource and certainly to support the group and show the group that they are important and that they'll be listened to. I certainly think that you need to be a part of the discussion that's had during the meetings as far as whether you vote or not. I mean, that's, that really, I mean, I don't, I don't, that doesn't really matter to me. I don't want to put the community off by doing something like that that's offensive. I think that we need to figure a way to let these committees come together and meet and not pay the consultant to, you know, to come and at one of these early meetings. I don't know exactly what that looks like. I do realize as we push them out, then maybe they are not interested as we get to a point that we want to hire them. But I just, I just think our committees need to meet and work. I think they need to meet, study the existing plans, and give us some, give us some feedback. I agree with Mr. Bolden. I like the appointees. I think that the chairs that we've put in those places are very capable of facilitating those meetings and accomplishing that work that we want to come out of those committees. I think I touched on, did I miss something?
No, but I'd like to add, I'm so sorry. I do want to add one more thing. I don't think our time has been wasted. I think we have tackled some very, very tough issues as a city. And I don't think one month has been wasted at all. We've started discussions, we've been listening to each other, we've really thought through some things. So I don't, just because they've been hard doesn't mean they've been a waste. And I think everybody in this room wants to plan. I know I certainly do. I'm committed to planning. And we're all committed to planning in the wisest, best way and to saving dollars when we can. I think we, there is consensus in the whole city on that, I think. So that's a huge deal. That's a huge deal. So, two cents on.
So how can we fashion a motion together along those lines? I think, I mean, kind of the things I described, is that okay with?
Do we need a motion?
Well, you'll need a motion to approve, to approve the resolution. So, I mean, I don't think there really, all the other components about the meeting times and dates and all that is necessary for your vote and motion.
Is necessary.
It's not, it's not. Just because what you're doing in that resolution is just really appointing the people that are listed in Exhibit A, and then designate those individuals if, as chair, if that's the will of council. And so that's one. I think really the other one is just to can, just to make sure I'm following as far as the other pieces to the next few days in December. So.
Yeah, I think what we want, I want to eager, we're eager to get started. We want the committee to meet, get a copy of the comprehensive plan, get basically the homework assignment to work on it and the downtown plan as far as going through those things and finding the good and finding the bad. And then hopefully, you know, can, maybe can meet once or twice in December, and then you'll come back, I think, and give us, maybe give us some input. I just think that that's what we need to happen. I think that's the consensus of what we want to see before we, before we meet with the consultant.
So, and so you're, what you're saying is you don't want the consultant to come on Monday?
Right.
Okay. So. Okay. We will be bringing that to council's consideration in January, the contract.
Okay.
So that's still a plan, at least at this point. And so. Right. And if you do approve, if you want to approve the resolution with those changes that I've brought to light as far as being able to replace folks if they leave, or they decide to remove themselves, or they remove, period. And then the other piece about the potential of having this, you all appointing this committee or a committee to be oversight.
Okay. And that's part of, that's, that'll go along with C. Correct? The resolution is a result of C, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Council, you okay with the resolution as it's written?
I move that we adopt the resolution as written. Is that what?
Probably a motion for C, if you would.
Okay. For C, I don't have a problem either. I trust you.
A motion yet to approve?
C.
C, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Bolden. Any further discussion?
Sorry.
Screwed up already.
C has noticed did not have this resolution attached. So you need to specifically reference this resolution if this is the one you want.
Okay. So would we do that all as one motion, or do we have two motions?
So it's a motion to adopt resolution number whatever, blank?
I would just say this, just with those changes.
With the changes, is that what, okay.
That would be good enough.
Okay, so we're back to the, I moved to, I make the motion that we adopt the resolution as changed and written in here. And you can correct me, Jan, later on in the minutes. So.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bolden. Any discussion? Those in favor, same thing, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Do we need to approve the regular item agenda C or not? Consider approval of the resolution? Okay, we just approved the resolution itself. Okay. Sounds, sounds great. Okay, so next is executive, executive session. The, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, we will go into executive session now, and it is 6:49 on December the 7th, 2021.
We're going to stay in here?
Mayor, he's ready when you are, sir.
Persuade, no, it's not quite. There you go. Persuade to Texas Government Code, Section 551.087. Council has returned from executive session. The time is 7:25 December the 7th, 2021. Okay, and so we'll move to number 10. Open for action on executive session items. A, consider approval of Resolution Number 1286-12-21, amending a Chapter 380 Economic Development Program Agreement by and between the City of Nacogdoches and HCH Aviation LLC regarding development of a flight school at Almangum Junior Regional Airport. Economic Development Director.
Yes, Larissa Philpott, Economic Development Director. You all heard a or approved an economic development agreement with HCH Aviation back in August. They are excited to be underway. They have enrolled quite a few students and everything is moving on track. They have run into some procurement issues and have requested that we amend that agreement just very slightly by replacing the storm drainage, storm sewer component of that with an equivalent dollar amount representing electrical work. At the time that your agreement was approved in August, they didn't have, they didn't fully have all of the estimates and drawings and engineering for the electrical work, and they do have that now. I do have drawings and an estimate from their engineer, and so they're requesting to replace the $30,000 worth of storm drainage with $30,000 worth of electrical work at the airport. And the, I believe the, yes, John is here. John Hughes is here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Any public comment? Okay, John, we'll reserve you. If we need you, we'll call you up and ask you questions. Okay, no public comment? Counsel, Ms. Bellinger?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Boulder?
I'm good.
I'm ready to second that.
So have at it.
I move to adopt the new agreement, so.
Okay, now the second.
I'll second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, move on to B. Consider approval of Resolution Number 1287-12-21, amending a Chapter 380 Economic Development Program Agreement by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Kingdom Perspectives Nacogdoches Limited. Economic Development Director.
So this is another amendment to a previously adopted agreement. The city previously approved an agreement with Splash Kingdom or Kingdom Perspectives in September of 2014. Splash Kingdom, in that agreement, was required to purchase, to bid on a piece of property and to construct a water park. They have done that. They've performed as required the last few years. That agreement did have a term of 15 years, and so it extends until September of 2029. Splash Kingdom at this point is planning new improvements. They are refinancing, and they have requested that the city assist in that by, because they're changing lenders, this triggered a new loan subordination and a new economic development agreement. So they're requesting that the city participate in those. The city at this time is, has, the city staff has presented a amended agreement, which does a couple of things. The original agreement contained an option that permitted the city to repurchase these water parks should it fail. should it fail to operate. That repurchase agreement would be for $1 and any remaining indebtedness up to $2 million. The new agreement changes that amount to $4 million, and that represents the original value plus the $2 million of improvements that Mr. Blevins has, has said that he plans on doing by 2029. The agreement before you tonight does contain performance standards. It does require annual compliance reports. That's standard for our economic development agreements. It does include a schedule of improvements, and I'll show you those in one moment. Does also require maintaining a minimum employment of 65 seasonal employees on a part-time basis, and then also requires some annual maintenance. And those are all things that, that Mr. Blevins is already doing anyway. This is just memorializing those, those maintenance things. These, I won't list all these entirely, but just know there are several large improvements included there. A high thrill drop slide by 2022, a large spray ground area in 2024, and then a wave pool and another large slide by 2029. You'll see those last two items on there are for fairly large amounts, and they show completed by 2029. Those would continue to happen throughout the remaining term of the agreement and essentially be chipped away as they maintain and repair. The soft costs include things like engineering and design and permitting. So we would keep a record of those in those annual compliance reports and just kind of determine what's left after each compliance report. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions of staff. And then also, Mr. Blevins is here. That's, and he's happy to answer any questions of you.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? And the same, Mr. Blevins will just reserve the right to ask you questions. That's all right. No, no comment? Okay, comment from Counsel, Ms. Fisher?
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Blevins, this one's for you.
Could, could you come forward? I'm sorry, I should have asked you a minute ago.
Hi, how are you doing?
Very good, thank you.
Good. I, my concern slash question has to do with ticket pricing. Almost half of, of Nacogdoches residents live at or under poverty level. And the ticket price, I'm concerned that the ticket prices, both daily and seasonal, are inaccessible for a lot of residents.
Okay.
And that's a big concern and problem for me. I know that there's something in the agreement about allowing ticket pricing through the city, or sorry, ticket buying through the city at 75%. Are there any other options that you have come up with? That you can think of? Anything that you would consider that would alleviate, that would alleviate that concern that I have beyond the, the option that's currently available?
Sure, we do some things in some of the evenings, special evenings, where we'll have a $5 or $6 ticket. We can't do that all the time. I mean, we are running a business to, to pay things back. But we do that. We do special things with the Boys and Girls Clubs and Glory Gang and some other things that we've done in this area. But, you know, we have a $5 morning on Tuesday mornings and some different things like that. So very open to hearing some other feedback. I mean, our, if you, a certain pricing for the size of park and, and how many people we can have in at one time and things like that, we need to kind of cater that to certain times so we can make sure that we can, you know, have the crowd. But would love to talk about, you know, some options that we could do in addition to what we're doing.
Great, thank you.
And we do definitely have pricing in the city. If it's, you know, city residents, we have that. We've never gone up on those. In fact, we offer some better discounts than we actually have said we would in the past, but would love to do that for tickets and season passes.
Okay, yeah, I would love, I would definitely welcome that opportunity to discuss further with you.
Would love to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bolden?
No.
What are the better discounts you were saying? I didn't follow that.
We.
So they can get it cheaper than if they go to the city?
Yes, ma'am. You, at the city, you can get it cheaper than if you came to the park. So you can do that. And then we, we have in our, we've been operating for seven years now. We could bring the price up 3% a year. We've never done that. We've never brought it up to the city during that entire time. And so, in fact, we've offered better discounts lower than what we have contracted that we could do. So we, we do want to work with the City of, of Nacogdoches and the, the citizens to offer those discounts. So you can get a cheaper season pass or you can get a cheaper ticket buying through the city if you're a citizen.
So that's the 25% discount?
Yes, ma'am. At least. It's at least 25. We, we've done more than that.
Are you, are you gonna do more?
We can't, we do, we do. I don't, I haven't set the pricing for 2022, but we do not plan on going on, going up at all for citizens of Nacogdoches. And then we, we have different discounts at different times that go above and beyond what we're required to.
Anything else? No? Okay. I had a few. I was, I was around in the beginning days. And, yeah, I know that we talked about the Phase 1, and then there was the, you know, some of the things of Phase 2, and I, and I think there's some on, on the list. Have you done any improvements, any adds since the beginning?
We have, nothing that you would consider major improvements. The first three or four years of opening a park or a business are really the ones that get you over the hump and get you going. And so we've, we've got to, how did we build bigger than what we needed to to begin with, or did we build right and go through that? We actually built more than was required from the beginning. We needed to add one major slide to open the park in our agreement. We built two major slides and, and four smaller slides even from the beginning. So our requirement was to build one major slide, a kids' area, and, and something else. I don't remember what the exact words, but, so we built more than that to begin with. And so have we built anything greater since then? We've built more shade, more, more comforts for our, our guests, more cabanas, pavilions, group areas. We were in the process this year, or we built a DJ booth, kind of, again, more creature comfort things than a major attraction. And so as we built up the attendance to the parks, to this park over the last few years, now we're at that spot where it's ready. We're, see who's coming in the crowd? What are we missing? What do we need to add to continue to reach, you know, outside of Nacogdoches as well as service the people in Nacogdoches? And so right now, it's, we don't have anything that a kid will look at right now and go, oh, I'm a little scared to ride that. And so now we're going to that high thrill ride. We've got a relaxing lazy river, and we've got the kids' area. We've got the moderate slide. So now we've had a chance to see, okay, this is what we need to add now, and then what can we add after that?
And I really appreciate this list that you've given us. How, how do you feel about being able to accomplish these things? Is this, is this realistic for you?
Absolutely. We will do that.
It's a commitment to do this to the bar? Great, okay.
Is, is there any way to accomplish these things sooner?
I would love to do it sooner. Again, it, it's revenue, it's attendance, all those things, meeting the, the customers' need and getting, getting in there. I, I don't want to say anything that I can't do, so I wouldn't. And Larissa and I had several conversations about it. I don't know where, there's, you're over here, you moved on me. Had several conversations going back and forth on this. And, and, you know, we would love to do something every couple of years from now, but I don't want to say that I would do that, and then it really need to be four years before, you know. And so this timing, I can commit to what we're saying here, and I would love to do it sooner. But I, I would hate to stand here and say, I'll do a wave pool in two years when that's really not what needs to happen. Makes sense?
How many parks you operate?
We operate nine. We own five, and we operate four more that we opened in El Paso this past summer.
Okay.
For the City of El Paso.
Okay.
They own those, and we operate them.
Yeah, great. Any other questions?
I have one more follow-up.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. This is just a follow-up to what I just said, but I thought of it later.
Sure.
Would you mind getting with Larissa? So this is a request for both of you and, and providing a list of those things that you do so as I like think through options and brainstorm, I don't want to double up on the things that you're already doing? That would be super helpful.
Sure. And another thing we do, my wife and I were school teachers 25, 30 years ago when, when we got out of school. And so it's, it's really big on us to work with the schools and stuff like that. So from the beginning, we do an A honor roll program. There's a lot of programs in there for the community for perfect attendance or accelerated reader and all those kind of things. But the, the students that just work hard and, and get a grade and things like that sometimes are maybe left off to the side, and maybe that's just our opinion. But so we give free tickets to every kid that makes the A honor roll. We can do that through their school. And so we give away hundreds and hundreds of, of free tickets to those students. And that's just one way. And if we can come up with some other things, we'd love to do that.
I appreciate that.
You bet.
I have one more question.
Of course.
Are you gonna need another loan to do some of these future projects?
It, it depends. And it depends on where the, is it cheaper money to go out and get a loan or not? But it won't affect this program that we're doing. So, does that answer your question? I, I can't tell you in four years, if it's time to do a wave pool, do we have the cash sitting there? And do we have the cash associated with this particular park? Because some of the things we've done to get the park where it is over the first, say, three years of building Nacogdoches Park, we've used money from the Canton Park. We've used some parks that are more established. Now Nacogdoches is more established. And so at what time does that park generate that money? And so if we set aside a certain amount each year, then we could do that. So, again, I couldn't tell you if that was, if that's what we would do or if that's what we need to. But either way, it couldn't go past the dollar amount for Nacogdoches that this agreement would do.
So that's a maybe.
Again, I'd, I'd hate to give it.
Bankers and lawyers to find out.
No, again, I'd hate to give you an answer that I couldn't, you know, just straight shoot you. But it's, sometimes you do get a loan to add something big because you know the return's going to be a year or two down the road. I couldn't tell you, right now, we're, we're going to put a slide in soon as we, we get this done, we'll put a slide in or we'll have it for the summer. What will I need to do three or four years from now when we do the next thing? I couldn't tell you if there's going to be a loan involved in that or not.
Okay, so all of these things that are out here, whatever you're negotiating in your new loan agreement, right, may not include all those things? Or are they all included in your new loan agreement? I'm not, you'll have to pardon me.
Sure, no, no. We're, the loan that we are, we're just redoing our loans for the sake of great interest rates, great terms, all those kind of things that we want to do right now. And in that, we will take care of the new slide and the things that go with that new slide that we're doing right now. We're not borrowing money today to set aside to do two years from now another attraction. We will have that money company-wide to do that. And so we, we generate money through all the parks, and then we decide what parks we're, we're moving on and which ones we're growing in and things like that. And so what I'm doing with this now is committing to you that we'll be using Splash Kingdom money and deciding now that we're going to be funneling more of it to Nacogdoches than I may have done before because we have this agreement.
So, okay, so will you come back in, in a few more years and say now we need six, you know, to raise this to hire? I'm confused.
No.
If you do another?
Right. No, ma'am. I, that, that answer I can give you, no, ma'am. I, I wouldn't be able to do that or wouldn't want to do that. Does that help?
Somewhat.
You have a question? I'd love to answer it. I mean, is there a question that's still lingering there?
Well, I mean, so my initial issue is that usually I've seen people pay down their loans. But I'm not.
Okay, great question. The difference, yeah, no, it's, I could, great, almost ask a question. I've got the answer for what I think you were getting at. We spent way more on this park initially than what we ever borrowed for. How about that? So we use our cash, and we use cash from profitable parks and things like that ahead of time. So we not only have been paying down, but now we're refinancing not just the Camp, the Nacogdoches Park, but a few of our parks. And in that group, we need to, to do this subordination to make that happen. But we have spent a lot more money than, than originally necessary for agreement for Nacogdoches. Did that help?
It's okay.
We, the, the park valuation right now is, property value is, I don't know, three and a half million, something like that. The, the concern is, the going concern is a close to $8 million park. So we spent well more than, and so we are paying down. And now we're, we're wanting to be able to associate $4 million loan with Nacogdoches when it's, you know, A, it's running very well. We're wanting to grow it. We want to continue to, to grow in Nacogdoches. And so maybe I answered your question as well as, well as I could, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Anything else? No? Mr. Bolden?
No.
No? Fisher?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins.
You bet.
Okay, do I have a motion for Number 10B?
I'll move.
Move, Ms. Fisher? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Bolden? Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We're done, and we're adjourned.